It's time once again for That Business Show with Jamie Maloney on 1250 WNS where business becomes show business. Now, live in studio and promoting the entrepreneurial spirit that drives the American economy, your host, Jamie Maloney.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday and welcome yet again to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney where business becomes show business. Again, weekday mornings at 8:00 AM here on 1250 WHNZ as I talk to different business owners, entrepreneurs, political and community leaders each and every morning. So I invite you to please tune in and take a break from the sports, news and political talk that's on the airwaves just a little bit too much in the morning with a show about what is going on in the Tampa Bay and surrounding communities. Also, as always, take a moment to peruse my website, TampaBayRadio.com. Over there, all the shows are available on demand via the show info tab. Also on the site, you'll notice I sell real estate. So if you're in the market to sell your home, I'm always offering up a free home valuation to all of my listeners. Click on the Sell Your Home link on the homepage and we'll get you over a home valuation within about 24 to 48 business hours. And we need some inventory out there on the marketplace. The market very undersupplied and a lot of properties go multiple offers and buyers out there in the community having some problems finding some homes. So if you're considering selling your home, now is a good time to put the home on the market. And again, you can get some information on that over at TampaBayRadio.com. Also, please connect with me on all the different social networking sites. You'll find me pretty much all over social media, Facebook.com/ThatBusinessShow, also under the handle Jamie_Maloney over on Twitter. A great show as always planned for you. On the second part of the show, we'll be talking with expert contributor Ryan Westfall, owner of Westfall Roofing. And he's got some great stories to share with us today. So stay tuned for that. But up first is Harry Cohen, City of Tampa Councilman and is Chair Pro Tem of District Four and is part of various boards and committees, serving as the Chair for the City Council Finance Committee, Vice Chair for the City Council Public Safety Committee, and Alternative for City Council Transportation Committee, and many more. Harry, welcome to the show today.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
So I appreciate you coming into the show this morning. You know, one of the things that's on my mind and stuff and something that, you know, is front and center for the City of Tampa government right now is the issue with all the flooding in the streets. And so talk to me a little bit about what the City of Tampa is doing with regard to all the flooding that's going on in South Tampa.
Well, I certainly don't think that it's any surprise to anyone that street flooding is one of our most significant and constant challenges. And this summer has been no exception. The rain has been pretty extensive. We, I don't think we've had a really sunny day for a couple of weeks now. And it really dramatizes and underscores the difficulty that we have as a low-lying peninsula in getting all of the storm water to drain out. And, you know, you can see anytime that it rains that it almost floods immediately. And it is becoming a very, very big both safety and convenience problem.
It's like 10 or 15 minutes of hard rain in South Tampa's a lake.
That's right. That's right. So one of the things that I know that I and a lot of my colleagues heard this past year on the campaign trail is that people really want something done about it. They've had enough of hearing that it can't be fixed, that that promises, promises, when is it going to get fixed? And so we are looking right now at the city and we'll be having public hearings on this in the month of August. We're looking at raising our stormwater assessment and actually having the money to fix this problem. And let me tell you, it is a problem that is fixable. It is simply something that simply takes money to solve.
What is the solution? What, I mean, how are we going to fix this?
The solution is to install vaults called culverts underneath the pavement in the streets to actually hold the excess stormwater until it has the time to naturally drain out. And what it means is, is that in order to actually fix the problem, you have to get in, you have to dig up the streets and install these vaults. There's a fairly popular misconception out there that all the new construction in the community has added to this problem. And in fact, it's really the opposite. It's really the old infrastructure that causes the problem. When we approve new development today, when we approve new construction, those projects have to handle their own stormwater. And the way that they do it is they, they put these culverts in underneath the parking lots or underneath pieces of the yard where they're building the new structure, be it residential or be it a commercial structure. The fix for the larger community problem is to go back and put these culverts in underneath the streets and in the places where they weren't required to be put in when the buildings were built.
Okay. So this will be a, you're considering then a special assessment that's going to show up on the City of Tampa tax bills?
Well, there already is a stormwater assessment on the tax bill.
Right. But an additional one?
Yes. Well, it was imposed under Mayor Iorio, I believe, in 2003. And right now, our stormwater assessment averages about $3 per month per household. That's an average. It's more if you live in a larger house. It's less if you live in a smaller property. And of course, it's more if you're on a commercial property. But it averages about $3 a month per household. And that is very, very low when compared to neighboring jurisdictions that have the same problem as we have. With the exception of Hillsborough County, who also has a very low stormwater assessment, most municipalities that are similarly situated charge considerably more than $3 per month. As a matter of fact, the City of Clearwater charges their residents about $13 per month. And it runs the gamut. I think Orlando is about $9 a month and various communities are somewhere in between.
What is the projection on what it's going to cost the community to fix this problem?
Well, the projection is, is that to fix it overall, and let me explain what the overall fix would be. It would, it would cost about $250 million, which would be about a $15 a month assessment per property owner on average. But, but you have to break it down because it needs to be made clear what that covers. Part of the money, about the first $3.62 of the increase would be to pay for additional maintenance of the existing infrastructure. So what I'm talking about there is cleaning out ditches, cleaning out drains, more frequent street sweeping, more, more frequent flushing out of the stormwater sewers, basically taking everything and doubling the amount of maintenance that's currently done. Because one of the problems is that our existing infrastructure gets clogged and is often unable to even deal with the runoff that we have now. So that's, that's the first part of the issue. The second part of the issue is that there are about 150, what I would call moderate-sized projects that need to be done throughout the City of Tampa. And they're pretty well evenly distributed throughout the city where you'd need to go in and put these, these culverts in, in order to hold, you know, significant amounts of water when there's a rain event. And then the third part of the program is some, what I would call major projects. There are four major projects that need to be funded in the city in order to really comprehensively deal with the problem. And they are the Dale Mayberry and Neptune intersection area, the Cypress Street corridor, Southeast Seminole Heights, an area in North Tampa. And then finally, there is a very, very large project scheduled and slated to be done for the entire area south of Gandy that alone will cost $75 million.
Now, you said this is being considered. When is there a vote scheduled? Is this, there's still a lot of public input that needs to be put in on this? When? What's the timeline?
Yes. So we started having this discussion on City Council over the past month or two. And we have scheduled a couple of different things to lead us to a decision. The first important thing to know is that the mayor included this assessment and this program as part of his 2016 budget that he unveiled to the City Council last week. The mayor came down on July 23rd, did a presentation to the City Council of his budget. And all of this work and its projected start times, which would be, which would be over the course of the next five to seven years, were part of his budget presentation. We have a staff report scheduled for August 6th where we're going to discuss the specifics and the details of what money would pay for what. And then on August 27th, we're actually going to have a public hearing at City Council and have a vote on whether or not to impose some or all of an additional stormwater fee in order to pay for these improvements. One of the questions that is, that we're looking at is, you know, whether or not a stormwater fee increase should be phased in rather than done all at once. And if so, how it should be phased in and how the work should be prioritized over the coming years. You can't do all the work at once. It's not physically possible. So some of the work could begin immediately. Some would have to be planned and sketched out in the years to come. And perhaps the assessment could track when the work is actually going to be.
And one of your challenges though, you're the South Tampa representative and to, you know, us in South Tampa, it seems like, oh, this isn't easy. This will pass easily. But you've got to convince the people up in the Northern Tampa area and the surrounding communities to get this pushed through. So is that going to be a big challenge, you think?
Yeah, you know, there is a perception certainly that this is only a South Tampa problem. And in fact, that's not true. It is really a citywide problem.
Explain that a little bit more.
There are areas of North Tampa that flood just as badly as the South Tampa peninsula does. The reality of our, of our street flooding situation is that the city is relatively flat. And we rely on gravity to slowly push the stormwater through our system and get it into, into the bay. And that gravitational pull is relatively slow because the slope is relatively slow.
So if this assessment is passed and so not just South Tampa is going to be getting the streets dug up, you'll also be doing this in the northern sections as well?
Yes. It is important to note that there are two areas of the city that actually would not be, actually, there's three areas of the city that would not be part of the assessment. McDo Air Force Base is one, that's for obvious reasons. But also Harbor Island and a large part of New Tampa north of USF would be exempt because they actually have their own stormwater systems. And you have to prove a tangential benefit in order to impose the fee. You can't impose the fee if there is not an actual benefit that attaches to it. So it's very, very important that anyone that is assessed get a benefit from the assessment. That's part of the legal requirement in order to, to impose the fee. But what we're talking about is a, you know, and I know that, that people generally suffer from a lot of construction fatigue right now because there's an awful lot of road construction going on.
The I-4, yeah, going on, or the 275, yeah.
On our streets. We're doing a lot of work right now that was put off during the recession for various different reasons that now is, we're catching up. But this work is very, very important to be done because if we do not do it, we're not ever going to be able to really make any headway towards solving this problem. And the problem itself has gotten very bad. It's gotten to the point where in a torrential rainstorm, 10 minutes after it starts raining, the streets can be completely flooded out. We're hearing about people whose cars are being damaged. Water is coming into people's homes. It's really getting to, to what I would say is a crisis point if we don't do something about it.
Yeah. And it always amazes me in every major rainstorm we get in the floods that the people who try to drive through the water, and if you're out there listening, don't try to drive through standing water, please. If you get any bit of water sucked up into that engine, it's going to crack the block and you're going to destroy your car's engine.
But you know, it's hard because you can be out there and these, these weather events happen very quickly in Tampa. And the rain can come down very hard, very fast. And oftentimes you'll be riding down a street and you really are in a, in a situation where you're looking down the side streets to see which streets are passable and which are not. And people send pictures into my office of different things that happen out on the streets. And we're going to show some of those on August 6th. And, you know, the number of cars, police cars even, that are marooned on the sides of the road that are, that are sort of beached, like abandoned ships, is really getting to be pretty high during some of these events.
Yeah. Got to take a quick break, but I'm talking with Harry Cohen. He's with the City of Tampa, City of Tampa Council. And you're currently listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney where business becomes show business.
Bud Spriggs and Movement Mortgage wants you to experience the thrill of one-day underwriting and the comfort in knowing your loans will be cleared to close in record time. While a competition looks to a lost closing date, Bud Spriggs and Movement Mortgage focus on their 12-day clear-to-close. They do this by utilizing their world-class operations staff to underwrite your loan within six hours, process your loan in 12 days, and have your loan closed in time. Underwritten in six hours, cleared to close in 12 days. Bud Spriggs and Movement Mortgage. Are you in need of new flooring or ready to tackle that home remodeling project? Then contact Jaeger &amp; Company Incorporated, a family-owned, state-certified general contracting business with over 70 years of experience and the recipient of the Angie's List Super Service Award for the last eight years in multiple categories. Jaeger &amp; Company comes to you with their shop-at-home flooring sales service and their hardwood flooring refinishing is the very best in the bay. Kitchen and bath design featuring American-made, well-borne cabinets. And all work is done by employees, not subcontractors. Learn more at JaegerFlooring.com.
Tampa Bay weather is a roof killer. That's why when getting your roof done, you want it done right. Hi, I'm Jamie Maloney of That Business Show. When considering a new roof or repair, talk to Westfall Roofing. They've been installing high-quality roofs in Tampa Bay for over 25 years. Get a free, no-obligation estimate by calling 855-99-roofing. That's 855-99-roofing. Find out what already 15,000 satisfied customers already know. Call now, 855-99-roofing.
Are you looking for a local real estate firm that knows the market and has your interests in mind? Then contact Jim McPeak at McPeak Real Estate Firm, a family-owned business whose agents have over 60-plus years of experience in the Tampa Bay market. Many of the agents are military veterans that know the VA process for buying a home and are proud to help our military members in any way they can. From residential to commercial real estate, McPeak Real Estate Firm is here to help. Contact Jim at 813-495-3875 and learn more at McPeakTeam.com.
Have you considered a reverse mortgage as part of your retirement financial plan? For homeowners age 62 or older, a reverse mortgage from Access Reverse Mortgage is a safe economical way to turn your home's equity into cash or monthly income. Access Reverse Mortgage is a family-owned company based right here in the Tampa Bay area for the past 10 years. They are A-plus rated by the Better Business Bureau and Florida's leading reverse mortgage provider. Call 727-347-0305 or go to AccessReverse.com to start your research today. NMLS number 4566. That's 727-347-0305.
Hey there. It's Lynn Wise, the founder of Wise Business Advisors and Contractor Business Alliance. I am a certified value builder advisor and I help business owners build a company that will allow them to have the business that they dreamed of when they started. Why did you go into business for yourself? I'm sure it was not to work 100 hours a week with no work-life balance and no financial freedom. What am I talking about? I'm talking about building a business that provides value to you and your family now and in the future. You can learn about the eight essential areas of a business that you must build to have a business that can be an asset for your future. Go to WiseBusinessAdvisors.com and take the Value Builder Score. It is free and will deliver your score immediately on how you are doing on building a valuable business for you and your family. Or call me at 772-834-8513 to learn more about the Value Builders System.
From the Bright House Networks Traffic Center.
Good morning. Big delay still on eastbound I-4 in the Plant City area. It's all due to an earlier crash. Now, all lanes are clear. Traffic should be getting back to normal if you're heading towards Lakeland and Orlando. Also, we've got the eastbound and westbound Courtney Campbell Causeway very slow through the area near the boat ramp. That's due to an earlier accident where they were pulling a van out of the water. And the Crosstown Expressway, very slow westbound direction towards downtown Tampa, backed up from I-75 to just past 301. See traffic problems, call the Injury Firm of Abraham Sun and Uterus Hillsborough Traffic Tipline, 866-545-9595.
This report is brought to you by iHeart Media.
At iHeart Media, we harness the power of sound in a way that can help you expand your reach to a new group of target customers and grow your business through customized and effective advertising. Call 844-BYRADIO or go to iHeartMedia.com.
Today, a 60% chance of showers and thunderstorms, high 87. Tonight, a slight chance of rain, low 77. Tomorrow, mostly cloudy, 60% rain chance, high 87.
You're listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney on 1250 WNS. Once again, here's your host, Jamie Maloney.
Welcome back, everybody. You're listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney where business becomes show business. Again, weekday mornings at 8:00 AM here on 1250 WHNZ and learn more about the show over at TampaBayRadio.com. Currently talking with City of Tampa Councilmember Harry Cohen about, you know, what's going on with the city. In the last segment, we were talking about, you know, the flooding issues that are going on in South Tampa and, you know, some fixes that are, you know, on the horizon for, you know, getting that taken care of. But Harry, another issue that's in the news a lot lately is our relationship with Cuba and stuff. So obviously, you know, that Cuba presents a great opportunity for commerce and growth in the Tampa community as well as all across Florida. What's going on with this specifically from City of Tampa's perspective?
Well, I think that the timing of your question's good. I know that today Secretary Clinton is going to be in Miami calling for an end to the embargo. And I believe that she's the first major candidate to do that during this presidential election cycle. I, you know, and obviously, the president and the administration have opened the American Embassy in Havana now. And there is now a Cuban Embassy open in Washington for the first time since 1961, I believe. I traveled to Cuba in 2013 along with a group from the Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce. And the thing that was really astonishing to me, that really had the most impact on me during the trip, was all of the opportunity that I saw there for Tampa. Because so many of the things that are needed to rebuild Cuba are things that could easily be supplied from the port that is closest to Havana, and that, of course, is us. Concrete, telecommunications infrastructure, all of the, the natural and resources that they would need in order to rebuild a place that, that literally has been sort of frozen in time since the 1950s. Havana is one of architecturally, one of the most beautiful cities in the Western Hemisphere, if not the world. And it is crumbling. It is 80% crumbling buildings that are in desperate need of restoration. And I think that if, if the, if the doors are opened between the two countries, a lot of that work can be done by American artisans and industry. And a lot of the investment that needs to be made there to bring their economy into the 21st century could be, could be brought there from Tampa.
Now, you mentioned that you traveled there. Is, are we able to travel to and from Cuba right now?
Well, you need a special license from the State Department in order to be able to go. But there are direct flights from Tampa International Airport. They have been started in recent years. They are full. And there are licenses available for certain types of travel. It is the hope of many people that over the coming years, that will be broadened and get to the point where there'll be free travel, just like there is to any other country. But even at this point now, there are people that are able to go for religious reasons, to go visit relatives, or to go on what's called a people-to-person mission, which is a special type of license that's granted by the State Department.
Right.
But you know, for example, right now, a cruise ship that touches Havana is not allowed to touch the United States for six months.
I wouldn't wear that, yeah.
After, after it touches the Cuban harbor. And you can imagine the tourism and commerce opportunities out there if that restriction were lifted for a cruise ship that wanted to, say, go from Tampa to Key West to Havana to New Orleans on the Gulf of Mexico. That would be a wonderful trip and it would be the type of trip that would really entice a lot of passengers to want to go.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to see if an embargo gets lifted and stuff. But yeah, if it does, it's going to be a boom for, you know, the Florida community overall.
The thing that was really striking to me, I mean, everyone knows how close Cuba is. But when, when your plane takes off in Havana and you look out your window to get yourself acclimated and you see I-75 coming out of Fort Myers on your ascent into the air, you really, it really drives home just how close it is.
Yeah. What's going on with Tampa development? A lot in the news, you know, with the Channel Side development, obviously. But what are some other projects that have been presented to the council for development in Tampa?
Well, the city is really rebounding quickly from the recession that brought us, really did bring us to our knees for quite a while. And I think the place that we're seeing the most activity is in apartments and residential growth. Our rental apartment market is just booming. And people ask me all the times, are people actually moving into these places? And the answer is yes. You know, as these apartments come online, our occupancy rates are at like 98%. So there's a real need for housing in the area. There's a need for, for housing that's affordable. And a lot of people are choosing to rent. And as a result, we're seeing a lot of apartment construction in the urban core, particularly downtown, in the South Tampa area, in Hyde Park, also in the Channel Side District, in Ebor City. And, you know, going out into the West Shore Business District as well, a lot of new construction. And I think that it represents a lot of confidence in the future of this area. It represents confidence in the fact that we have an educated and trained workforce that is capable of paying the rents to live in these, these new, new developments. And it's a very, very exciting time because it's, it's, it's a time when the city is really experiencing growth that we haven't seen for a generation.
About a minute left, but just a quick question, you know, with the announcement of Jeff Vinick and, and the, you know, the, what he's going to do in Channel Side, have you seen a big impact from, you know, other developers and people as a result of his announcement?
Oh, no question. No question. And, and what we're seeing is a lot of excitement about downtown particularly. You know, one thing that, that I've worked in downtown Tampa for almost 20 years. And it used to be that there was just nobody out on the streets at night. Today, even in the middle of summer, there's people everywhere. There's restaurants, there's residential, there's hotels, there's a lot of activity. It's very, very exciting.
Oh, it's definitely an exciting time to be in Tampa. Harry Cohen, City of Tampa Councilmember, thank you very much for being in studio today. We'll definitely get you back in and keep us up to date with what's going on in Tampa. You've been listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney. Stay tuned, we'll be talking with Ryan Westfall, owner of Westfall Roofing when we come back from the break.
Hi, welcome to Jaeger's. We just want to take a minute and show you what we're all about. At Jaeger's, our primary business is hardwood flooring, although we are remodelers for kitchen, bath, and general construction. We operate a fleet of shop-at-home vans that have all the flooring-type products, hardwood flooring, laminate flooring, tiles, stone, what have you. So we're able to come out first with products in our vehicles and take a look at the setting, how the colors will work, and then to be able to come up with some options and ideas for you. If that's not good enough, we have a large distribution center that we inventory product and have a nice display area.
From the Bright House Networks Traffic Center.
Good morning. Earlier problems on the Courtney Campbell Causeway near the Big Bridge in the west and eastbound direction. Now, all clear, all lanes open and traffic should be getting back to normal through there. Eastbound I-4 also looking a whole lot better through Plant City as the earlier accident before the pulled Parkway now off to the side. Westbound Crosstown Expressway, though, still very slow from 75 to just past 301, crash on the shoulder there. See traffic problems, call the Injury Firm of Abraham Sun and Uterus Hillsborough Traffic Tipline, 866-545-9595.
This report is brought to you by the Foundation for a Better Life.
She didn't just visit the sick and poor. She moved in with them because they needed help. Mother Teresa couldn't do it all, but she gave her all. Compassion, pass it on from the Foundation for a Better Life at Values.com.
1250 WNS Weather Center forecast, cloudy, breezy, and rainy once again today. Rain chance at 70% for showers and storms, mid-80s for the high. Tonight's lows, upper 70s. Impact Radio, 1250 WNS.
You're listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney on 1250 WNS. Once again, here's your host, Jamie Maloney.
Welcome back, everybody. Happy Friday and thanks for tuning in to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney where business becomes show business. Again, you find the show on the air for the first time. You'll catch me here weekdays at 8:00 AM here on 1250 WHNZ. And each day, I'm talking with different business owners, entrepreneurs, political and community leaders about what they are doing in Tampa and the surrounding areas to make a difference. Also, as always, please connect with me on all the different social networking sites, Facebook.com/ThatBusinessShow for all the show updates and previews of who's coming in each and every morning. Typically get that up by midday. And also, you can see the upcoming guests on Tampa Bay Radio as well. We put the lineup for the following week up each Sunday afternoon. And also, on the site of TampaBayRadio.com, you'll see that I do sell real estate. And again, if you're looking to sell your home in the area, click on the Sell Your Home link on the homepage and I'll shoot you over a free home valuation. Typically get those out within 24 to about 48 business hours. Again, if you're just tuning in, the last segment, we were talking with Harry Cohen. He is a City of Tampa Councilmember about what's going on in the Tampa community. Talked a lot about the stormwater issues that we're having in the South Tampa community and, you know, what they're doing to fix the solution. So we'll have him in on future shows as well. Just, you know, a great person, you know, making a difference in Tampa and excited again to be able to talk to people each and every morning on this platform. And if you're out there listening, and I always extend an invite to my listeners, if you're wanting to come in on the show, I'm always looking for content, always looking for material. Best way to get me, send me a message through the contact form at TampaBayRadio.com as to what it is that you're doing and why you'd like to make an appearance. And we'll see about getting you lined up for an upcoming show. And I'll tell you what, it's becoming a great platform here in the morning. It's really making some excellent numbers on my stream and the listenership and it's really starting to grow. So take a moment to come into the show and let me know what it is that you're doing over at TampaBayRadio.com. Time for my second guest on the show. Ryan Westfall is the owner of Westfall Roofing, a family-owned business. And he took over in 2008 after graduating. And he took over in 2008 after graduating from Eckerd College. Under Ryan's direction, he has turned a local family business into a difference maker in the community and roofing industry. Ryan was recently featured as an up-and-coming roofing contractor in the nationally published Roofing Contractor Magazine and Westfall Roofing was recipient of the 2014 Angie's List Super Service Award and GAF's Triple Excellence Award. Ryan, welcome to the show today.
Good morning, Jamie.
So, uh, you know, we've talked before, Ryan's been an excellent supporter of the show. He's been with me all the way back, uh, when I was doing the Jamie Maloney Real Estate Show.
Yes, yes we are.
So I appreciate the, uh, support and Ryan's, uh, excellent roofer. Uh, so if you're out there in the community and you need a roof or any type of job done on the roof, just an inspection or repair, you know, Westfall Roofing is the company you need to call. They've done a number of jobs for me through the years. WestfallRoofing.com is, uh, their, uh, site. Uh, but you know, you shared with me before the show, an interesting story yesterday. You're out there at a job and you made the mistake that, uh, some of us make, uh, from time to time in the, uh, business of the homes I sell in real estate, you working on them, you went to the wrong home.
Yes, I did.
Tell us about that.
I might've got confused for, as a burglar yesterday. I, um, I went to a home, the address looked very similar to what was on my, on my phone and my GPS and, uh, and, uh, the homeowner, when I had spoken to him, he had told me just to go in the backyard, take a look at the roof, see what the issue is and give him a call. And he said that his, his daughter should be home and everything should be okay.
Yeah.
And, um, so, uh, so yes, I went in the back, back of the yard and...
Yeah, just doing your job. You had the company truck with you too, right?
I had the company truck. I did, I did take off. It's, it's hot, so I, I was, I, uh, I have a, had my undershirt on and, uh, and, uh, and so we took, and I took off my company polo. It's hot outside. I mean, it's, it's Florida, so.
You're a bald guy with a beard, so you kind of look like a tough guy there.
No, 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 no.
You might've intimidated somebody.
No, maybe a little bit, but no, so I'm in, I'm in the backyard and, and all of a sudden the homeowner, I, well, I was in the backyard and I was looking, seeing what's going on. And, uh, and I just noticed the inside of the house was, seemed like someone was home and it wasn't necessarily maybe what, what I had expected. And, uh, and all of a sudden the homeowner that was there just poked around the corner and, and popped around the curtain and looked over at me and I mean, just frantically started running back and forth inside the house. And, uh, immediately it occurred to me that, oh my goodness, I might be at the wrong home. So I started to look, waving my hands in the air, telling her, no, 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 I, I made a mistake, I'm so sorry.
Right.
Uh, ran into my truck, put on my company, my company shirt, came knocking on the door and she told me to leave and get away from her house. And, uh, so I went back to my truck, cranked it up and of course, uh, what happens next is my truck breaks down, so.
So you broke down in front of her house?
I was broken down in front of her house and, uh, and just praying that, that she understood what had occurred. It was just an honest mistake and, uh, I mean, it's raining, uh, obviously the roofer's busy and, uh, and I just got a little confused today, uh, yesterday and, uh...
I, you know, we've all made that mistake when we're dealing with, you know, going to homes each and every day. I sell foreclosed properties and, uh, I've told the story a few times on this show. First thing we do is we go check occupancy on them. If we think we're vacant, you know, we rekey the properties. Sometimes, uh, we've made the mistake of, uh, rekeying the wrong home. Never a fun conversation to have with the homeowner. Or rekeying a property prior to them actually being vacated through various errors and things like that. But yeah, it's a never a fun, uh, fun conversation to, uh, have. I've told a few of those stories on the air. Have you ever, uh, put a roof on the wrong house or anything like that?
Um, actually a while back we have, um, typically what you'll see is maybe the roof, the wrong roof will get loaded. Um, we've, uh, we've actually put the wrong color shingle on too, but I mean, it's, I mean, we've been in business 26 years, things happen, uh, but...
They make for great stories.
They do make for great stories. At the time, they're not the greatest story and, uh, you're, you're trying to figure out a way to make the homeowner happy, but, but, uh, things happen and, uh, what's most important is we, we try to correct it.
Right.
But, uh, but yeah, it's, it's, it's...
Makes for an interesting day though, yeah.
It definitely does.
So let's talk a little bit about Westfall Roofing specifically. Uh, graduated yourself in 2008, uh, from, uh, Eckerd College and now you're taking over the company. I mean, it's a family-owned business. How long has it been around again?
26 years, been around for 26 years.
And this was started by you?
My father, Kirk Westfall.
And so what, what age did he put you in the business out there or at least on the roofs?
Oh, I was, uh, I mean, I was on roofs when I was four. Um, when I was 14, I told him I wanted to get a gym membership. He stuck me on a framing crew. Uh, that didn't last very long and, uh, and then, yeah, I just, uh, got out of school.
I've got to say, working on a roof in Florida's got to be better than a gym membership. You're going to get in shape on these roofs.
Oh, very quickly. I mean, the, 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 the weight just comes right off, it really does. And, uh, but, uh, yeah, got out of school and, and, uh, just kind of just jumped right into it and just started working with the, the family and, um, noticed that when we started working that, uh, my father was very good at running the company and, and putting on roofs, but there was definitely, uh, there was definitely a need at sales and...
So you're, you're the salesman now, so you're not up on the roofs anymore?
Uh, no, 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 no.
That's a good thing about being owner.
No, my guys are a different breed. They, 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 uh, but yeah, I'm a salesman. Uh, they, they have, uh, they're a lot more tougher than I am.
Yeah, that's, that's one incentive to work hard in the roofing business, so you don't have to get on those roofs in Florida and put those things on. I definitely feel for all the roofers out there that, uh, may be, uh, listening to me. Now let's talk about some of the changes in how you've grown the company through the use of technology. Uh, you know, you sent me, uh, you know, some stuff yesterday on how you differentiate yourself from other roofing contractors through technology, cloud-based computing, things of that nature. So how have you developed the company through technology?
Well, uh, I think, I think a good place to start is how we started. Um, I mean, when I used to go around and, and pitch roofs, I was basically walking around with a carbon piece of paper, handwriting the quote and just handing it to a homeowner and telling them, hey, here's your quote for your $10,000 roof. And that just didn't seem right to me.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and I had noticed other contractors, so you get into it, so you notice other contractors had some folders, they had some literature. So we of course adopted the folders and started, you, and started, you know, putting the literature in there and, and about the products and the company. Uh, but very quickly I noticed that homeowners weren't opening these folders and going through all these sheets of paper. And then we played with the idea of, okay, maybe certain things should be in there, some things shouldn't, but, uh, ultimately I just, I kept seeing these folders just being stacked full of paper and the homeowner's never doing anything with them. And, uh, I'm, I'm a younger guy, I like my iPad and, uh, sure enough, we created some forms that we could use on our, on our iPads and, um, today we are, we basically do everything paperless and, um, even how we measure the roofs. Uh, before I would spend on, I'd be on a roof for an hour, hand measuring that thing and, uh, and you had to draw it out and, um...
So when you go on a job and you, uh, you're doing the estimate, I mean, what does the consumer or the customer get from you in terms of the technology and stuff? You're not going to just write something on a carbon piece of paper?
No, now they get the proposal. Um, it's all cloud-based, um, they're getting, they're not getting a big folder, they're getting, uh, the proposal, literature, any information about, um, about the company, um, diagram of the roof, photos of, of things that are, that may be of concern. And, uh, it's a lot more, uh, I guess...
That's just a great selling point for your company right there.
It is, it definitely is.
Because it creates an electronic signature of the event and the event that there is a problem, it's easily accessible. You can easily transfer the information around and so many contractors that focus on getting the job done, which is important, don't, don't get me wrong, but the technology aspect of it is such an important thing and some that a lot of contractors don't focus on. So you had the sense of mind to, to actually get out there and take control of it, correct?
Yes, yes. We even, uh, we even measure our roofs with aerial photos. Um, we pay for, uh, pay for some software every year and, uh, um, we don't have to hand measure roofs. They, they get measured, uh, basically sit in front of my desktop and, uh, we can zoom in on top. I can actually look at the house, how it looked like 10 years ago and, and pull lines and, uh, get, get the dimensions that we need to, to, to measure the roof.
Now tell me how the customers though have evolved since, uh, since you started in roofing, you know, uh, some 20-some years ago, just, uh, on the tops of roofs and then in 2008 when you took over. I mean, people expect technology today, I think.
Yes, they do.
But tell me from your perspective, how, uh, you know, the customers evolved today?
Customers, I, I think, uh, they're a lot more smarter. Uh, they, they know about products, sometimes they may know a few things that you don't. And, uh, that, that's always interesting, but, um, um, they, uh, they're going on Angie's List and they're really are whittling down the contractor that they want to hire, um, before we even go out there. And, and, and a lot of times, and what I've even seen more and more is, you know, they're not even wanting to meet with the contractor, they're asking just for the proposal to be emailed. And, um, and that's why we have adopted, you know, cloud-based computing to, to, to count, basically satisfy that customer's, uh, demands on how they want their estimate.
Now you just mentioned Angie's List, uh, you're a Super Service Award member. Tell me about that. How did that come about? How does that come about on Angie's List?
Basically you just have to get a lot of good reviews and, uh, you, you, you have to, you have to have a A, you have to have a rating and, um, you, uh, you just have to be committed to making sure your customers are happy with the, the product you're putting on and for us it's roofs.
I've never used Angie's List myself, but is that really a good source or I wouldn't say a good source, but is it a definitely a source where people in the community are definitely using?
No, it's, it's a, it's a phenomenal source. I actually, uh, I, what I tell our homeowners, it's, I think it's a good opportu, I think it's a good way to tell a story and, but it's not me telling the story, it's the, our customers actually telling a story about our company. And you can read those reviews on there and you get a really good idea of the, the feel of the company just by reading these reviews. And, uh, and I think it's, it's a, I mean, it's a great sales, it's a great tool to, to, for the homeowners and I, I think everyone should be on Angie's List using it if you're going to be, if you're interested and if you're in the market looking for a roof or AC contractor.
Tell me how the company has evolved today just from an employee standpoint. I mean, how many crews are you running? I mean, what's the company grown into today?
Um, today we're up to 50 employees, um, and, um, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's, that's...
How many jobs is that at any given time roughly?
How many jobs? I mean, man, uh, anywhere from five to 15, 15 jobs. I mean, we are, we are definitely busy.
This is your busy season right now, these rains.
Uh, we can't even work, it keeps raining. It's, it's insane. It's, uh, it's, we're, we're definitely busy right now.
But this is when all the problems, uh, you know, rear their head too and when these rains come.
I know and it, yes, it definitely is. And the biggest issue is we can't work because it's raining, but I mean, we, we are experiencing extremely high call volume right now, we really are.
And I'm sure the average customer doesn't understand that they want the job done and you're obviously behind because of the rains.
Well, we actually, we've gotten creative too here recently. There was, uh, just one job we finished last week, we actually basically built a tent around the roof. Uh, it was a smaller roof, so smaller tent, but we actually built a tent around the roof to, to be able to do the job and, uh, we were able to complete it in a couple hours. But, you know, yeah, we, we put a tent up to, to get it done.
Yeah.
And, uh, so whatever it takes.
Yeah. Well, definitely, uh, time to, when all the problems come out on the roof with all these rains we've been having here in the Tampa region. Got to take a, a quick break, but I'm currently talking with, uh, Ryan Westfall. He is the owner of Westfall Roofing and you can learn more about him, of course, over at westfallroofing.com. And you're currently listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney, where business becomes show business.
Are you in need of new flooring or ready to tackle that home remodeling project? Then contact Jaeger and Company Incorporated, a family-owned, state-certified general contracting business with over 70 years of experience and the recipient of the Angie's List Super Service Award for the last eight years in multiple categories. Jaeger and Company comes to you with their shop-at-home flooring sales service and their hardwood flooring refinishing is the very best in the bay. Kitchen and bath design featuring American-made, well-borne cabinets and all work is done by employees, not subcontractors. Learn more at jaegerflooring.com. Bud Spriggs and Movement Mortgage wants you to experience the thrill of one-day underwriting and the comfort in knowing your loans will be clear to close in record time. While a competition looks to a lost closing date, Bud Spriggs and Movement Mortgage focus on their 12-day clear-to-close. They do this by utilizing their world-class operations staff to underwrite your loan within six hours, process your loan in 12 days and have your loan closed in time. Underwritten in six hours, cleared to close in 12 days. Bud Spriggs and Movement Mortgage.
Tampa Bay weather is a roof killer. That's why when getting your roof done, you want it done right. Hi, I'm Jamie Maloney of That Business Show. When considering a new roof or repair, talk to Westfall Roofing. They've been installing high-quality roofs in Tampa Bay for over 25 years. Get a free, no obligation estimate by calling 855-99-roofing. That's 855-99-roofing. Find out what already 15,000 satisfied customers already know. Call now, 855-99-roofing.
Are you looking for a local real estate firm that knows the market and has your interests in mind? Then contact Jim McPeak at McPeak Real Estate Firm, a family-owned business whose agents have over 60-plus years of experience in the Tampa Bay market. Many of the agents are military veterans that know the VA process for buying a home and are proud to help our military members in any way they can. From residential to commercial real estate, McPeak Real Estate Firm is here to help. Contact Jim at 813-495-3875 and learn more at mcpeakteam.com.
Hey there, it's Lynn Wise, the founder of Wise Business Advisors and Contractor Business Alliance. I am a certified value builder advisor and I help business owners build a company that will allow them to have the business that they dreamed of when they started. Why did you go into business for yourself? I'm sure it was not to work 100 hours a week with no work-life balance and no financial freedom. What am I talking about? I'm talking about building a business that provides value to you and your family now and in the future. You can learn about the eight essential areas of a business that you must build to have a business that can be an asset for your future. Go to wisebusinessadvisors.com and take the Value Builder Score. It is free and will deliver your score immediately on how you are doing on building a valuable business for you and your family. Or call me at 772-834-8513 to learn more about the Value Builders System.
Have you considered a reverse mortgage as part of your retirement financial plan? For homeowners aged 62 or older, a reverse mortgage from Access Reverse Mortgage is a safe economical way to turn your home's equity into cash or monthly income. Access Reverse Mortgage is a family-owned company based right here in the Tampa Bay area for the past 10 years. They are A-plus rated by the Better Business Bureau and Florida's leading reverse mortgage provider. Call 727-347-0305 or go to accessreverse.com to start your research today. NMLS number 4566, that's 727-347-0305.
From the Bright House Networks Traffic Center.
Couple problems in Pinellas County, went along southbound US 19 at Highlands Boulevard, crashed there, also northbound 66th Street at 94th Avenue. 49th Street closed in both directions for the next three weeks or so as they work on the railroad tracks just south of 62nd Avenue North over in Hillsborough County. Still some slow traffic through downtown Tampa on 275. And the crash onto some Crosstown near 301 now off to the side. See traffic problems, call the injury firm of Abraham Sun and Uterus Hillsborough Traffic Tipline, 866-545-9595.
This report is brought to you by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. The Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission reminds you to always wear a life jacket and make sure that your family and friends do the same when out on the water. Remember, we're at Florida and enjoy the outdoors safely. Go to myfwc.com for more information.
Today, a 60% chance of showers and thunderstorms, high 87. Tonight, a slight chance of rain, low 77. Tomorrow, mostly cloudy, 60% rain chance, high 87.
You're listening to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney on 1250 Winds, WHNZ. Once again, here's your host, Jamie Maloney.
Welcome back everybody and thanks for tuning in this, uh, early Friday morning to That Business Show with Jamie Maloney, where business becomes show business. Again, you'll find the show on here weekdays at 8:00 AM here on 1250 WHNZ. And also, uh, you, if you're sitting in an office, you can always watch us on your computer. We do stream all the shows here, uh, live in studio. So if you head over to TampaBayRadio.com, on the homepage, there is a button that says "Watch Live Stream." Click on that and you can see us here in the studio and we throw some things up on the screen from time to time. So if you're just listening to us in the car or something, you're not going to see that. So again, uh, you can catch that over on the homepage of TampaBayRadio.com. If you have any issues with that, you can always catch the stream over at webeantv.com as well. That's the site, uh, hosted by Tampa Bay Multimedia, the company that handles the streaming. They do a great job for me, uh, each and every day, but every now and then I get a, But every now and then I get a listener, or I should say a viewer that has a little bit of an issue on the, uh, stream cast over on Tampa Bay Radio. So you can catch it up on webeantv.com as well. And also we put all the shows, uh, back up on demand over on YouTube also, so the streams are put over there and then the audios are on Tampa Bay Radio, SoundCloud and iTunes as well. So pretty much all over the place. If you don't catch the show live, we do have it readily available on demand. Currently talking with Ryan Westfall. He is the owner of Westfall Roofing, a family owned business. And, uh, you can learn more about them over at westfallroofing.com. And I'll tell you what, Ryan's just an overall great guy, great company to work with, and he's been an expert contributor to That Business Show as well as the Jamie Maloney Real Estate Show going all the way back to my start almost in the fall of 2013. So Ryan, I mean, it's just, you know, great having the relationship with you and I know you do a great job and you're very responsive to all the customers. So got to thank you again for, you know, what you've done, you know, in helping the show. And I know you've spun off a number of, uh, business from the show. So hopefully, uh, you know, listeners that are out there that are looking to get involved in the show, I'm always looking for content, always looking for guests, and also always looking for sponsors and contributorships, people that want to come in regularly and grow and promote themselves on the airwaves. Ryan, again, been with me since near the beginning, back when I was doing the Real Estate Show. So Ryan, in that last segment, we were talking a lot about, um, you know, how you've utilized a technology, you know, the typical roofing contractor or contractor in general focuses on just getting the job done, which is important, but they forget about the technology aspect of it, something that you've implemented into your company since you took over in 2008. How has that, you know, helped your, you know, customers? I mean, how's it helped pick up business?
We've been able to spend more time with our customers. Um, we're not spending as much time measuring a roof or putting together an estimate. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's at our fingertips, we're in front of a computer, measuring the roofs before we go to the homeowner's house. And, um, instead of spending all that time up on the, on the roof, we're able to sit down with the homeowner and be able to discuss, you know, the different options for a roof replacement.
Right.
And, uh, there's even, there's even ways to save money on your homeowner's insurance with the new roof you get. And, uh, and, uh, but more time with the customers is, is first and foremost, the, the biggest thing that we've noticed.
How has the buy-in been from your employees? I mean, you're talking to me about you just hired a, a person, a 60 years old and stuff and they, they love it and everything, but I mean, is you getting any pushback from the other contractors?
No, I mean, uh, everyone that works with us, they all, everyone's embraced it. And, uh, I think what's most important is that it's user friendly, whatever you're, whatever you're selecting or whatever we're deciding to use or implement, it must be user friendly first and foremost. And, uh, you know, a little bit of training, it, it all, they seem to pick it up. And, uh, even, um, my father, um, I mean, he's, he's 50, I believe 54. Um, he, uh, I mean, he uses his iPhone, he writes the proposals the same way I do, he measures the roofs the same way I do. And, uh, I mean, and this is, this is somebody that had, you know, was, you know, had hand